Zoning Board of Appeals, Wednesday, June 26, 2024, 6:00 PM. Hybrid meeting. This meeting, hearing of the zoning board of appeals will be held in person at the location provided this send notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this meeting in person. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt a virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interests on a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 857-972-8220, or by calling 312-626-6799. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Samantha Benoit, administrative coordinator, at zba@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 114, prior to the meeting. Recall the meeting, the order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, public hearing. Air ZBA will conduct a hybrid public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, June 26, 2024, regarding the application submitted by Platt Builders for the property located at 109 Central Avenue, Air Mass. Applicant is seeking a variance from the Air zoning bylaws, section 6.2, appendix B, schedule of dimensional requirements to allow for the construction of two structures within the rear setback. Applicant is seeking to reduce the required 30-foot rear setback of the light industrial zoning district by 29 feet 10 inches for structure one, and by 29 feet for structure two. For Zoom call-in information, please contact zba@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 114. Advertised June 7, 2024, and June 14, 2024, Neshoba Valley Voice. We have a representative from Platt.
Yes, sir.
You can just grab a chair.
It's kind of crowded here sometimes.
Hi, my name is Chris Brown. I'm an employee of Platt Builders. I'm also a co-owner of the building and property. This is Michael. He is a project manager for Platt Builders, and he is managing this project. So, the reason why we want this variance is because the nature of our... so Platt Builders is a general contractor of residential construction. We have a lot of equipment that we need to store somewhere and then bring to a job site, a lot of staging, safety equipment, stuff that we want to keep out of the weather. And so, at the moment, part of the requirement to buy this building is we had to buy air moving and storage, and we bought a number of storage contracts. And so until those contracts are over and that stored material can leave, we need a temporary way to keep things dry out of the weather so they don't just get destroyed. And that's the purpose of these pavilions, is to give a dry shelter for our equipment.
Are these permanent or temporary?
So, our intent was always temporary, but you know, we're building them with the idea of them being decode. They're a posted pole barn structure with a roof. And, you know, I think in seven years, we may no longer need them, and they can come down, but it's a matter of how long we have this, these storage clients in our, in our building.
Is this over by the fenced in area in the back? Is that what it is?
It is on that side, yeah. At the moment, we have a number of storage pods with our equipment in them, and some of them aren't even on our property. This intent is to get the stuff on our property tighter to the building.
You, you cutting these down to you have, you're only a butters as a railroad?
That's down the back, that's correct. There's a, an access road, and then there's also, it's a pretty wide ease, well, area they have between the tracks itself and then our property. Our, our two buildings mostly occupy our, our land. There's only a small area of about eight feet along the back of the property that is our land from the building, and so we don't, it's, it's only where this smaller second building is that we have the room to fit this on our property, but it, it just barely fits on the property, as you can see from the plan.
So, what is the distance of your property line to the rail?
The tracks itself?
Yes.
Oh, if I, it's got to be 60 feet.
So, when you come out to an inch of your property line?
Yep.
There's still 40, 50 feet?
Oh, no, 60, oh, 60 feet from our property line, yeah.
To the actual track.
To the actual tracks, and maybe more than that, that's my guess.
What, what is the use of the building after you fulfill the contracted storage?
This, this pavilion building?
The, the main building that's, that's a warehouse?
Oh, so we're, so the majority of that is office space and manufacturing for cabinetry. We have a large cabinetry manufacturing inside that building. The back part of it, we still have full of crates that were storing of people's belongings from the previous business that we, we took on those contracts. And then, in the secondary building, that's a self-storage building. At some point, we may remove the self-storage once the customers are gone, and, and then we would have more storage ability inside the building.
And you're obligated to those customers for seven years?
Uh, no, not obligated for seven years. We are, we're not, that's our guess of about how long before we start, you know, getting more aggressive with evicting, but it's not our intention to evict the people. They tend to kind of leave as they're ready to not need storage anymore, and we're not going after new, new customers in the storage business. So, you know, as we bought the building and we did the renovations to move in, it was definitely nice to have the added income of some rental, but now we're in the process of trying to minimize that, so we have room for our equipment.
Fair enough.
So, I was looking at the documents from the application, and the photo that shows, I think, one of the structures, had you started construction on it, and that's when you were made aware that?
Correct.
You're on the property line?
Yeah, I was falsely under the impression that even a temporary structure of that size needs to go through permitting.
Got it, okay, all right. Because I saw that, I was like, whoa.
Yeah, that one?
Yeah, we're coming retro, but obviously you stopped.
Yep.
So, truthfully, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this one. You know, the lot is a funny, it's a funny lot. So, I looked at it on the assessor's GIS maps, and, you know, I know they're not accurate, you know, within an inch, but they're pretty, pretty accurate. And it's funny, because all along Central Ave, before you get to this lot, everybody sort of has the same, you know, lot line?
Yep.
And then when you get past that smaller accessory building, cuts right up.
Yeah.
And he's, he wasn't kidding about those storage units not being on his property behind the large building, because according to the assessor's maps, they aren't.
Yeah, they're right there.
You know, yeah, yeah, they're, they're all along there. And again, if you look at that aerial, that little blue line there is, they're on it.
Yep.
So, if you want to take a look. So I think the shape of the lot, in this case, you know, could present a hardship. You know, the other thing is, if we were to, you know, do a, a variance here, this could be a perfect situation where we condition it. You know, they've said that they have customers that maybe they're seven years, have them come back in seven years, you know? They're temporary structures, condition it with a timeframe of seven years, and hear it again in, you know, then, but I'm not opposed to it. I think they're, they're fine. It will provide safety in that it's going to keep their equipment dry, and I assume that's safer when you're building scaffolding for guys climbing buildings, so, like I said, I'm not opposed.
Hey, I think seven years is a bit much.
I only offered that because that's how it was said.
I know, but, but they're under no obligation to do that for seven years.
Good point.
You know, and I think that they could make an effort to, to move that process along a lot faster.
Sure. Do you feel that'd be a, there'd be a time constraint on the variance?
Thanks, Ron.
Say that again?
You feel there should be a time constraint?
This, this is, that line's consistent, and then for some reason, I'm sure of his accident.
It's so far out of the scope of the, of the zoning bylaw. I mean, it's an inch of the property line, yeah. I mean, with the size of that building, I think once they clear up the required storage contract, they'll have room to do things differently, and they won't need that. So, yeah, I, I, I think that.
You think it needs a timeframe of?
Yes. Yes, I, I, I think it's reasonable.
What do you think is reasonable, time-wise?
Three to five? I pick a number, I don't know, but I just think that seven's kind of beyond the scope.
What do you think?
Definitely timeline, this is, this is a huge, oh, within one inch or so of the property line, this is a huge.
It's close, it is very close.
This is a huge incursion into the...
All right, and I'm just concerned about if, if there's some kind of an emergency or something, they're very close.
Well, they're closer to the property line, but they still got 60 feet of...
Well, if, that's a real, if there's a real emergency, 60 feet is not a lot of room.
That's true.
That's all, so.
That's true.
Yeah, I would live with five, I would like three, but, so what do you say?
Split the difference.
No, I, say what you got to say, Ron.
Closer to three, or, three on this one, because of the enormity.
You want to look at three and then revisit it?
Or put a three-year shop light on? We don't want this to be a forever thing.
Okay.
And, yes, I think it's, it's a big incursion into the...
True, true.
...back lot, so appropriately, it should have, you know, if we're to grant this, it should have some kind of, you know, reasonable, but, you know, not, not open-ended restriction of the time period that they can...
Okay, Jess, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I wish the application had said from the start, temporary, but I think I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Mike's reasoning about this shape of a lot, having certain constraints. I agree with the fire department's assessment that protecting the equipment is, contributes to safety and consolidates things on the lot, and, but I agree with actually Ron's three-year, you know, maybe subject to renewal if, you know, before the zoning board, but this would give you an opportunity to use us as the bad guys to have to push people out. But in furtherance of a local business, and I see the need to protect equipment is, is viable, so.
I agree with you, all of you. So, do we have any, no, any butters, anybody to speak for this? Anybody raise their hand? I can't see that.
I have, thank you for asking. This is Roger Mann. I'm the senior director of real estate for the MBTA.
Yes, sir.
And we are, yes, we are the, we are the abutter that is most affected by at least one of the requests for zoning relief, and that's the effective elimination of the rear setback.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so in, in general, you know, when we're running active rail and an abutter request to remove a rear yard setback, we generally support the preservation of the existing setback for, I think, for a lot of the reasons that I heard tonight, like about safety issues, and if there's any construction that needs to take place that's within what we refer to as the zone of influence for the MBTA, which is like a 30-foot radius from, from MBTA interest, so, and, and I apologize if, if the proponent has been reaching out to us to, you know, to go over this, you know, in advance. We get inundated with, with requests, so if we, if we missed a request to, to meet with the proponent and review the plan, I apologize for that, but we, we definitely support the preservation of the setback as is, until we have an opportunity to really understand what the implications are.
Did you guys reach out to MBTA?
I did not, no.
No, we didn't.
Well, they would have been noticed, right?
They get the notice.
They were, they would have been noticed, that's correct.
Yes, they did receive the notice, and I got the green slip back, so they did get it, and they did request the information, but whether or not they discussed with the client.
Well, then they got the notice, and they're here, so that, they got, obviously...
All right, I would just, if I could, just add that along that stretch, there are a number of buildings that are very, you know, much closer to the railroad tracks than our building is, and our property is. It is, I don't understand why the property lines jog, but...
Those were probably pre-zoning laws.
Yeah, possibly, yes.
Probably relevant, I think.
But yeah, as you think about safety and train accident or construction, they're probably more limited by those properties than our property.
Are you, is the MBTA suggesting that they needed the time to review the applicant's information? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that, I think that's a good suggestion, because at, at some point, when construction begins, or, or when, when a building permit application is made, we often get contacted by the building commissioner, because they know that it, you know, may be within our zone of influence, and we're going to need to review the construction plan anyway, but...
What kind of timeframe are we talking about here?
I, I don't know when, if or when the building permit has been applied for, so I don't really know that.
No, there's not a building permit, that's why they're here. They, they, they need a variance before they can do anything else, so I doubt...
They don't have a permit to do anything yet.
That's correct.
They don't have any permit to do as of right.
That's correct.
Okay, so timeframe, I mean, I didn't say contact the MBTA as soon as possible. Yeah, and I've heard a comment about how other, about other buildings are, or something there. That's not really a reason to continue to do things.
All mail was sent out on May 24.
You were notified on May 24, and this is the end of June?
Yeah, and that's, that's why we're here, yeah.
I understand that.
We did, I think, I think we did, when the MBTA is engaging in construction that affects a butters, you know, we try to reach out as soon as possible, talk to the butters about what the potential effects would be, and, because we just find it, it's more productive, right, to reach out to the neighbor. But, but you did, you fulfilled the, the legal requirement, you notified us, and we're here in believing to express, you know, we would support.
Again, what kind of, what kind of a timeframe are we looking, are you looking at to, to review the applicant's information? Are you looking at a week, a day, a month? I mean, they're sitting in front of us for the, with their application, and we could continue it at some point, but that's, that's kicking a can down the road, so to speak.
So, we support the preservation of the existing...
Yes, sir, I, yes, sir, I understand that.
Can I also just clarify? So, if the applicant does receive the variance, they still have to go through site plan review? So, there is another bite at the apple for the MBTA?
Thank you.
Well, yeah, there's an appeal period, right?
Yeah, there's an appeal period, and there's also the site plan review that they'd have to apply for.
I didn't hear that, though.
There's an appeal process, and plus there's a site plan review they'd have to go through.
Before the planning board?
Yes.
Right, and then there, and then there's the, potentially a license application, if they're, if the work that's being performed is going to be within the law of influence, it sounds like, I, I didn't, I don't have it right here in front me, because I'm, I'm driving, but is the proponent proposing to actually put a building like right up against the property line?
It's a pole barn, it's not a building.
But yes.
But yes, it's right up against the property line, within...
An inch, eight inches.
Yeah, .3 feet or something.
Within inches, right?
Yeah, within inches.
So, access, access to the exterior of the structure would require getting onto MBTA land?
That's a fair question.
As far as what, erecting the structure?
I, I, it's a pole barn, I, that means there's...
The sides are...
It's open.
Right, yeah.
So I don't, I don't understand the access in the back, or the front, or the sides, because it's open. It's a pole barn.
So, there's no one needs to stand?
It's like a carport.
Outside of the building? So, no one needs to stand outside of it?
No, sir.
Should we wreck it? Should we wreck it?
No, no.
Stand inside of it, should we wreck it?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I mean, we'll, we'll have to take a look at it.
All right, sure, thank you.
When's our next meeting?
But, you know, just, we, we oppose, you know, at this point, we...
Understood, that's clear. Thank you.
Eliminating the, the existing set...
Yes, sir.
Person, yeah.
So, when? The next regularly scheduled meeting is the 17th of July. As it is, we've had no applications submitted for that one, and the deadline was yesterday.
Okay, that's good enough.
But if we continue this to then...
You could do it.
We can do that without deadlines.
Well, will the MBTA be able to review the information that these people supply before, on or before the 17th of July? Can you, can you guarantee that?
I'll take it back to the, to our EOD team that does that review. It hasn't been formally presented to us, right? Other than the, the notice of the meeting, there, there hasn't been anyone from the proponent that has, like, made a...
That's what I understand.
...proposal.
That's correct.
I can ask them, right? I mean, I work in the real estate department, so we respond to, you know, real estate issues. There's another team that I can talk to tomorrow morning, I'll shoot them an email tonight, and say, the proponent wants some time to, you know, make a presentation on this property, and, and I think they, they should probably work it in. You said July 17?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't, I can't speak for everyone else, but it sounds like a reasonable amount of time.
All right, good, thank you. Can you guys put something together?
Certainly, I mean, ideally, a site visit would answer a lot of questions, I think, around...
Well, sure.
But I, I imagine their standard answer is they disagree with any...
Yes.
So, I, I don't, yeah, I'm not quite sure what I'm going after, if that's their answer.
Well, it's, it seems like because we're butting up against the property lines, as bad as you are, the MBTA being your only abutter does have a, a say in it, okay? So, it appears that you guys are going to have to go to the MBTA, get their blessing before you get back here. That's the way I'm hearing it. I could be wrong, but that's, that's what I hear. Yeah, Jess?
Is there some way the gentleman who's on, online could provide contact information to facilitate the Platt Builders contacting the MBTA and setting up a site walk?
Fair request, can MBTA do that? Okay.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah. So, do you want me to give you like phone number and email now?
Right now.
No, no, we're being recorded. It's a business.
That's MBTA, though, that's...
Yeah, that's...
What does that mean?
The, the department that they may be contacting is, is usually not something that's given out to the public.
Broadcasted.
It's probably, it's usually specifically for certain people. I think it would be better if it's...
It's a real estate department, I mean, that should be...
Well, no, he's from the real estate department.
And that's the, that's the information he's giving to the other people at the desk.
He's going to give it to, he's going to give another department, I think.
I'm going to recommend you email the ZBA, which is my email address, zba@air.ma.us, which was included on that notice you were sent. I've also emailed a couple of your contemporaries, so they do have my email address. Send it to me, and I will forward it off to you guys in the morning.
Wonderful.
So we don't...
Exactly.
Okay.
I think that's right.
So, in spite of all that?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if we go forward and make our decision tonight, will the rail people be notified before the permit process, and that that's when they could have their final input?
As, for the building permit, that would fall under the building commissioner, I don't, I mean, I can tell Charlie to do that, but...
It still has to go to site plan review.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so...
They would be notified for that as well.
In that process, they can square away that end of it. They can make their objections known at the, at the site review.
I think it's just, in, in my opinion, I just think it'd be simpler to reschedule.
Okay.
And let MBTA and these guys square everything away, and then come back on the 17th of July, either for or against them, we'll take it up at that point. I think that's, that's our, that's our best recourse right now.
Yeah, I'd agree with Sam, with the chair, because if the board does approve it, then the variance has been, has already been given to them, and the applicant would only be able to, or the MBTA would only be able to appeal the variance.
Right.
Because that site plan review, you've already given the variance, so we're looking at it as it's allowed.
Okay. So, we, they, we need, just like any other abutter, they need the opportunity to review. Somebody wave a nickel at the clock.
Me...
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'd just like to underscore, I mean, I'd support continuing this to the 17th, but also given the MBTA was notified at the end of May about this, I'd just like to...
Well, they were notified about the hearing, but, but they weren't notified about what was going on, they were only notified about the hearing.
And they could have also reached out to Platt Builders, but what I'd like to say is if we delay, continue to the 17th next month, just put a little pressure on the MBTA that we're likely to make a ruling at that meeting.
I don't, I don't, I agree, yes.
So if they want to have input, abutter input, they need to facilitate getting Sam the information tomorrow morning, you getting it to Platt, and then setting something up within the next few weeks.
That seems reasonable to me. That seems reasonable to me. How's the MBTA feel about that?
About, you're going to vote on it tonight?
No, 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 no. We're, we're talking about continuing it. But you need to get together with the applicant and get your, uh, problems resolved before the 17th of July.
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion, we continue this hearing until July 17th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Roll call.
I think if we're all in person, we don't have.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Okay, but it, but it was advertised as a, as a.
So we've continued your hearing until July 17th.
All right. Thank you for your time, Brad.
Thank you, guys.
And I'll get.
Thank you, MBTA.
Okay. Let me just send it to me tomorrow. Great, thanks.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we close. Oh, no, no, we don't. We can't continue it. Yeah. All right. Next thing on the agenda. Soya, Nissoya?
Yes, sir.
Nissoya. Public hearing notice. Mayor's EBA will conduct a hybrid public hearing at 6:32 PM, Wednesday, June 26, 2024, regarding an application submitted by Nissoya Foods, USA LLC, for the property located at One New England Way, Air Mass. Applicant is seeking a variance from the air zoning bylaw section 6.2. Schedule of dimensional requirements to allow for the construction of a portion of the building to be at a height of 58 feet or 40 feet is allowed in the industrial zoning district. For zoom call in, or call in information, please contact zba@air.ma.us or 978-772-8220, extension 114. Advertised June 7, 2024, and June 14, 2024, Nishoba Valley Voice. Do we have a Nissoya representative?
Yes. Good evening, board members.
Mr. Gibbons.
Yes, how are you? So my name's Tom Gibbons and I represent Nissoya Foods, USA LLC, of One New England Way here in Air. As the chairman just read, we're here tonight seeking a variance on the height from section 6.2, such that the addition that we're proposing would be 58 feet where 40 feet is required. So with me tonight is Daniel Kim, James Kim, and Justin Lee from Nissoya, David Mcwell from Kelly Engineering. You remember David from last time we're here. Doug Anholz from Tetra Tech and remotely Victoria Howland from Tetra Tech. So the board may recall that, um, we obtained a variance in November of 2022.
Yeah, I just started to say, didn't we do this once before?
We did, yes, yes. And that variance was for a 75-foot height addition. Uh, the plans changed and so a modification to the site plan was filed with the planning board. And at that time, it was discovered that the variance from November of 2022 had expired. So after my presentation, David can take you through how those plans have changed if the board would like. Uh, but I just kind of wanted to give a bit of a presentation, trying not to repeat myself too much, um, from what we did. But you may recall from the 2022 presentation that this property has historically been used for food production. As far back as 1986, through our last variance in 2022, there's been a number of variances granted for height on this property. This property is located in the heavy industrial district. And the topography of the lot is unique in that the surface of the lot, our lot, uh, where the construction will occur is 31 feet below the road surface of Westford Road. And you'll remember that we abut up against Westford Road. Uh, and it's approximately 42 feet below the lowest elevation of the residential lots across the street on Westford Road. So this topography means that the addition will appear to be, uh, lower than the limitations of the bylaw from Westford Road than if our construction was happening at grade of Westford Road. Um, as is evident from the history of this property, uh, food production carried out here often requires a building height of higher than 40 feet. Without the variance, uh, the applicant will experience a financial and a production hardship. This expansion is designed, uh, to allow Nissoya to operate in the most efficient way, both in terms of energy use and the production process. Without the variance, the applicant, the applicant would be forced to construct a building to a height that doesn't meet its needs or simply not do the addition. We believe that the board can grant the variance, uh, without detriment to the public good or substantial derogation from the purpose of the bylaw. We believe that the purpose of the bylaw and the height restriction is to prevent very tall, out of character buildings within the district. Because of our unique, uh, topography, as I say, this, this building will not be out of character, nor will it be obtrusive to, to the abutters. Uh, in addition, there's currently, uh, well-established mature trees and vegetation along the property line with Westford Road that screens our building. Uh, and finally, the addition at 58 feet will match other portions of the building that are already at 58 feet. So back in November of 2022, it was unanimously granted. The variance was granted unanimously for 75 feet. This is not as high. And again, if the board would like, David can kind of show you the plans to see exactly where the, the addition will be.
If memory serves me correctly, when you were in here for the 75-foot, you, they were putting in a separate product line for bottling. Is that what it was?
Well, so at the time, that was going to be, uh, cold storage. And although this is what they call a pick and pack building, and David might be able to explain it better. But, but it is, it is storage. It goes in there, uh, and then it's shipped from there. Uh, but it's, the plans have changed, uh, from what was proposed before. And this is what they're looking for now.
Did the application, there were no drawings or anything?
No, the plans submitted with the, uh, the plans were submitted.
Didn't come through?
I, I had no drawings, no plans. The application states.
Nothing. Well, all appropriate numbers of plans were submitted.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Maybe they didn't get attached correctly.
No, we got, we had the applications, but. Anything else, Sam?
The, the plans are on the screen here. What we've done is, um, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the zoning board, my name is David Mcwell with Kelly Engineering Group. We helped, uh, Nissoya Foods through the site plan review process and zoning board process and conservation commission process, uh, about a year to a year and a half ago, to, um, accomplish permits to, um, redevelop the site as Tom had just described with the building. The project went through, uh, pricing exercises with the previous, uh, architect and contractor. And value engineering, uh, decisions were made to put, uh, the larger portion of the building, which would have been 75 feet, on hold, um, for a certain timeframe and to still fit out the building to make the production improvements without expanding the freezer and cold storage component. Um, and therefore resulted in a scaled back project. Uh, unfortunately, no building permit was pulled and no construction was started and therefore the variance lapsed. And a little bit of an oversight on everybody to not come and get that extended and/or, uh, put a shovel in the ground. So if I can use the mouse, I'll just cruise through. What we did here is, uh, black and white drawings, uh, on the Tetra Tech title block were presented, uh, along with the cover letter for the zoning board application prepared by Attorney Gibbons. And so what we've done here is I've just inserted some sheets in color right on top. So this was the first sheet that was submitted. It's just a title sheet, list of drawings. This is an aerial photograph just showing the property. Property's 12 acres or so. That's the existing production facility. You can see portions of the building here where the building is currently, uh, 58 feet is right in the back, right here. There is an existing variance for that. I believe there's also another variance for something 80 feet tall. I think it's a exhaust plume. So there's been multiple variances historically here. I'm just walking through the plant sites. So this is an existing conditions plan. It's basically the black and white version of the color plan I showed you with more details showing topography and everything else. This is what we filed. It's a layout and zoning plan. It's very, very similar to the previous one, except this piece right here, which I was going to go to the color one because it explains a lot more. If I can get to that next sheet. So I'm going to, um, this section of the building here is the, this is the original approved, uh, rendering that we did to get the plans approved. This section of the building that's a little higher, that's why we highlighted it then, that was the portion that was proposed at 75 feet. There was a proposed portion here. I think it was detailed out at 40 feet at the time. And the remaining of, uh, portions of the building, I think, were 35 or so, something, something in those orders, not requiring a variance. So did I have another one in here? And the current one, did I not include? I thought I put two, two, um, color versions. Oh, there, there they are. I just went too fast. The current version of the plan is this one here, and you'll see it's all green where that freezer was going to go at 75 feet. And the portion that we're seeking relief is this portion here only at 58 feet tall. And as I had just mentioned, this entire portion of the existing building that's right here is currently 58 feet tall. It's only 58 feet at this one point, and then it slopes backwards. Well, not backwards, but it's, the roof then pitches about four or five feet toward this point here. So at the edge of the building, it's not quite 58 feet. But in order to attain the proper, um, relief, the 58-feet height variance to match the existing building was requested. I just show you a couple more slides here. This was the previous one. I kind of skipped to that. I apologize for that. Um, that was the portion that was to be 75. And we're all in, in the, uh, in the same ballpark. These are the drawings that were submitted, which are detailed architectural renderings. I'll get to the one that's most important for this. These are the new loading docks, just like I had explained before. Your existing building is right here at 75 feet. We come at 58 feet, excuse me. 58 feet here, and then we go down here, and those are the new loading docks. And then here is what they call the picking, pick and pack shipping area. And there is a nice elevation that we put together and recreated for this one that shows the elevations as they go up toward, um, the residential district and, uh, and the street over here, showing all that. And you'll see that we're just picking up where the building is and tapering down here. Um, as Tom had mentioned, and if we go back to that first aerial photograph, you'll, everybody will observe that not intruding into the, really the only landscape, uh, tree buffer along that stretch of Westford Street. All the other, um, industrial properties have cleared everything. Um, this is the last, the last stand of trees. We worked very hard with the planning board to make sure that that's going to stay by, um, you know, not encroaching our building closer to the road and also not, um, not cutting down too many trees. And we also have a package within the planning board permits to remove dead trees and plant new ones. So that stand of forest was, will be there. Um, and, and be a, a buffer for the residential uses and drivers by for perpetuity. So this slide here is actually the slide we used for the previous variance. And it's very, I just can't get that. I'm having a hard time scrolling. I'm sorry. There we go. Um, you'll see here, we were, that's the 58 point here. We were coming up to 75 and then coming over. And it was also a much wider addition. Um, so plan's been scaled back a little bit, but we still do need the similar, similar relief. And I, I think that's all of the, all of the changes that, to the plan for the new zoning, um, relief that's requested. And I think Attorney Gibbons has properly stated the hardships for the applicant and also, um, you know, reviewed the decision and stuff from last time. So with.
What do you plan on starting this one?
Well, this, the good news on that, on that note is the, um, the, the team was reassembled. We are legacy for the team as the site engineers, as Tetra Tech. They also have their own civil engineers, but, um, we had all the information in the drawings. It wasn't too much to update with us. So they kept us on board. And all the other professionals are Tetra Tech employees, the architects, plumbers, structural engineers, Doug's actually the structural engineer, but also the, uh, project manager for the entire project. So they've done all of the other work and they've got a little bit further along with details of the, um, core shell structure, pricing and those things. So I think that Nissoya is ready to go and get this piece of the work going right away. As, as you see on this plan, well, this one or the next one, I forget where it is. There's kind of two components. There's two additions to the building. There's one on this side. And there's one on this side. They are ready to go on this one immediately because what this one does, in addition to provide the pick and pack, it improves their loading situation. And also part of the site development plans opens up another curb cut for better circulation within the site and also to prevent trucks from queuing up in the lower portion of the site where the DPW and other, there's easements.
The DPW easement.
DPW has an easement all, all through the back. And, um, there's a sewer pump station here. This aerial photograph is not approved. The Catania Oils, who I believe also had a variance and property line variance, their building sits here, there's sewer pump station back here to do some monitoring. And currently, the trucks all queue up in here. With more loading positions, they won't have to queue up the same. And it's going to improve their business dramatically for this piece of it. So there's, uh, multiple, multiple reasons that this is a great project for the town and the applicant.
Thank you. Abutters, just quickly, just so that the board knows. The applicant has submitted, they did submit, uh, for a minor site plan, uh, modification. And, uh, they were before us in, I believe, May? I think it was May. Um, and that's when we, uh, discovered the variance was, is expired. So we have that continued out. Um, we've continued it out to July 9th. So once the, they get through this, uh, variance, uh, hearings and the application, uh, then they still have to kind of come back to us to finalize.
Abutters? Yes, sir?
So I'm with Catania Oils. We're abutters.
Your name, sir?
Sorry, Dan Brackett with Catania Oils.
Yes, sir.
So we're, we're abutters. There's no, um, we don't have any issue with concerns. I know it's not necessarily pertinent to this, but we, if that was possible, we'd like to see the one little waste water treatment plant be taken care of or removed.
Pass that along to site plan. Any others?
I have a question.
I was looking at the board to see if anybody raised their hands. There is. Is there one?
No.
What's that little red thing?
That means they're muted.
Oh, okay.
That's the mic.
I can't read that from here. Marilyn?
The MBTA was on there. They must have dropped off.
I just have a question. I'm just a little unclear because I wasn't involved when you're in the meeting. But you're asking for variance for the specified site on the right that's in the golden color?
Correct.
But the other golden color you mentioned, that was also going to be an addition? Is that also?
That is an addition. It was a proposed addition to the building to, um, to, um, expand and, and enhance the production operations within the building.
Apparently it doesn't need a height variation.
That part does not need a height variance.
Oh, okay. So the variance you're asking for is really just for that one small part?
It's for that one, it's for that one piece.
Okay.
On the plans, there's, you know, they may, they may come back for the freezer component. There might be another variance or an extension of the existing variance. Um, so hopefully business is good enough for everybody that they fill that, uh, that in in some future date. We didn't change our stormwater clogs or anything like that. So there'll be a small, uh, lawn area that maybe someday will become the freezer. But it was, uh, it was value engineered because of the cost.
Jess?
Just to have it on the record, the Board of Health had a question about whether there would be any increase in odors from this addition. Doesn't sound like there is, but.
Yeah, and I, and I think years ago, there was an odor issue when we dealt with that at the, the last variance. There, there hasn't been any odor issues.
Yeah, when, when the last variance and there was an issue, it was stated, well, that is being corrected at this point. Is there any?
Well, I think it was corrected before our November, well before our November, uh, 2022 hearing. And, and I forget, but I, I think there was a variance to, to some, out of that structure that, that dealt with the issues.
Wasn't it for like, like a smoke stack?
It was one of the stacks.
So that solved that problem.
Okay, I'm good.
The Board of Health has not received any odor complaints from Nissoya in ages.
Got it all, yeah.
Okay. Mike?
No, I, I mean, I supported it when it was over 70 feet. I supported it 58. You know, we don't have. You know, we don't have any butters outside of the gentleman from the oil company, Olive Oil Company. They seem supportive.
Rob?
Okay, so out of curiosity, what is the height needed for, extra height needed for, just to blend in with the rest of the buildings? I mean, obviously get all that.
I think it's to provide proper racking within the building so they can have storage of, of product to go up onto the racks, get the pallets off, put them in the trucks.
It's all transportation related and not process related.
Correct.
There's no process stacks or anything like that.
We do, we do have the architectural team. I'm not an architect. I didn't focus on the building. I focused on the outside of the building. So if I have spoken out of term, I'm, I'm asking to be corrected.
Dave, I can answer that.
Yes, sir.
Doug Anholz, I'm the project manager for Tetra Tech. So, and I've worked with these guys at Nasoya, they're doing great. So he's correct, there is no process equipment in here. What this area is intended for is refrigerator trucks come up, they're picking up finished product, which is refrigerated tofu. So they have to store, you know, multiple semis worth of finished product in pallets ready to be loaded on trucks so that they can get it in, get the truck loaded, get the truck out. So it's basically, and that's what we call pick and pack, it's a cold, or it's not freezing, it's just a cold dock with high bays of rack storage that we store finished tofu products, get it on trucks, get it out, get it to stop and shop, get it sold.
Thank you. Okay. John?
I'm good.
So can I just ask Danny a question?
Go right ahead.
So Danny, this is a case where topography would be a good reason to grant a variance?
Yes, yes. So in my review, they do meet the first prong of the hardship for this because it does have a unique, it is a unique lot and also the topography.
Okay.
All right. Just give me two seconds.
Go right ahead.
All right. So again, for clarity's sake, I'd like to make a motion. Once I've made that motion, when will I present the finding of facts? Following a vote? Should I do that now?
So I think the best way to do it would be to go through each of the three prongs for, the board just kind of goes through each of them. And then at that point, you can all make the formal vote on the actual application.
Okay. All right. So I'm just going to read through these three.
Yep.
Okay. How does the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land or structures differ from other properties within the same zoning district? I propose that the topography of this lot and the building in particular being so far below grade differs it from the other buildings in the zoning district.
Yep, yes.
Would a literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw incur a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, on the applicant? According to the applicant, yes. And then would the granting of the variance be detrimental to the public good and substantially derogate from the zoning bylaw? Again, I propose no.
I agree.
Okay. That being said. All right. I make a motion to grant a variance to Nasoya Foods USA LLC for the property located at One New England Way Air Mass. For, to allow for the construction of a portion of the building to be at a height of 58 feet where 40 feet is allowed in the industrial zoning district.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Good night, everyone.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for Nasoya Foods LLC?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda.
Hey, Sam? Yes. As we're going through the three prongs, the form says all of the required findings must be found in the affirmative in order for the variance to be granted, but number three?
You can't.
Yeah.
Number three can't be.
Yeah, number three is.
The affirmative meaning, like, it meets, it meets number three.
Yeah.
No one else was to say.
All right, we've done more than three prongs before on this one. What are we talking about?
Special permits.
Special permits.
Okay, like seven.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for May 15th. I heard some discussion earlier. No?
Oh, yeah, I had a couple, on page two, okay? The paragraph that begins, variances are special permits, end of the fifth line, a special cannot be required. It seems like there's a missing word.
Yeah.
Permit?
Yeah.
You got that one?
Yeah.
And then on.
Nothing gets by Jess.
I'm sure there are a few. And then on page three, middle of the page, Jagi Gino asked if the chair can stop public comment instead of is. And then next line, Amy Questle explained that the chair can stop, not end. Yeah, that's it. John, got any more?
My turn.
Well, there was one little thing. There was an A that didn't belong there. On the very beginning, down at the bottom, the town is divided up into A zoning districts with, oh, I thought that should be a number or just not be there at all.
Yeah, it should just be into zoning districts, yep.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of the meeting as amended?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Next item on the agenda.
See, that way you know we've read them. I put all the work in, it was so nice.
Board member reappointment schedule. Are you kidding me?
I think it's.
Who did that?
I did.
Jesus.
So as it is, the, you, the board members are appointed by the select board. This was just sort of so we could review and if you had questions, because I know I did email it out prior to, we just needed, so every year at least one person needs to be up for reappointment. It ended up so.
I thought it was two a year.
At least one. Two a year is great.
Because, yeah, even number, I thought.
It helps.
Three-year cycles, so there would have been two every year.
Two every year. But it ended up, so half of you were to be reappointed this year and the other half in '26. No one was being reappointed '25. So as it is, to correct it, this year's reappointments, which were Ron, John, and Marilyn, have staggered terms. So Ron's term is for one year. He'll get reappointed next year for a three-year term. These shortened terms are temporary, just a one-time thing, and then the next batch of you.
So it's housekeeping.
Housekeeping. And then the next batch in '26 will have the similar thing.
And I think that's a good thing to do because it'll get us on a regular schedule.
Yeah, we've been in the ditch for 10 years, right?
You know, cleaning up.
And then I will track them and I'll make sure it's, it's set up so that if you do leave midterm, who replaces you will just finish out your term, not get a new three-year term.
All right. Speaking of terms, we need to discuss chairman.
Next meeting, right?
No, this one, they've already been appointed.
The, technically the reappointments go into effect on the 30th of June. So it's the first meeting of the fiscal year.
Let's get it done and out of the way.
I don't think we can because it's not an agenda item.
Open discussion.
It, that needs to be an agenda item, and we, you've continued to July, we'll do it in the July meeting.
I don't know if I'll make July. That's, that's the only thing I was worried about. That's the only thing I was worried about. I just got too much airfare staring me in the face. Give it some thought. I, I mean, whatever you want to, whatever you guys want to do, I mean.
So the only thing I would say is just because technically the terms don't start until June 30th, I don't think we can until the fiscal year, the new year.
June 30th is Sunday.
Yeah.
Statutory thing, though.
Yeah, it's a statutory thing. I mean, we could wait until the August one if we want to.
Yeah, technically you can, you could decide to move it out later. I've had other.
We can, like.
That you can.
You can do.
If you don't make that meeting, I propose that.
Okay, fair enough.
I think it's important we're all here to make that.
Yeah, we want everybody here, absolutely.
I have my calendar, see about August.
I know, I know, late August, early September, I'm back in Southeast Asia, I know that. But I don't, I don't think I'll hit there until like at least the 18th or the 20th.
The August meeting's the 21st.
I'll try and push it out.
I can do that.
I'll try and push it.
And I will say I've had other boards, I know my Board of Health, you know, their rules do state that it should be done in July, and every year they go, well, let's do it in September. So.
Yeah, but they only do quarterly, don't they? Do they?
Board of Health meets twice a month.
Do they really?
Me too.
Wow.
You're a saint.
All right, that's fine, that's, that's what we want to do, we'll try July.
All right.
So have it as an agenda item for July, and if we're not all here, then let's push it down.
And if I know ahead of time you're not all going to be here, then I won't even put it on. We'll go for my.
All right, fair enough. Thank you. We already talked about the upcoming meeting, that's July. What's August, 21st?
21st.
So the finding of facts tonight, is that an appropriate way to do that?
Yeah.
That's how we should be doing all of our motions going forward.
Yes.
So in the event, because I've been thinking about it, in the event that throughout the course of public hearing, we've determined we would like to vote to deny, would our finding of facts just state that they don't meet the three prongs and then we take a vote?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, and so sometimes, so some boards do it differently in the sense of, like with the planning board, I will come to a meeting with a draft decision that has proposed finding of facts that I've gotten, you know, as we've discussed throughout our meetings. And they'll discuss, is this correct, is this correct, and this correct? And then vote at the end of the decision. You can also do it prior to having the draft decision because then you're doing it and then she's just writing it up and giving it over to you guys to sign.
So we do the, you do the decisions, our fact, findings first and then vote?
Yes, because the finding of facts gives you the reasoning as to why you're voting yes or no. It, it's, it's your backup, your, your, your information for that. And technically, legally, you need to have on the record why you're voting yes or no. Because if an applicant, if there's a, if someone, if, if you guys were to deny it, but do not state the finding of facts and reasonings why you did, voted, you denied it, then the applicant has a strong, strong ground to appeal that. And usually when you don't have findings of fact or reasonings behind the denial, usually the courts will overturn that.
Now, will they?
Because there's no substance in the, in the record.
Will they like remand it back to us or?
So they, sometimes they will remand it back, sometimes they will just overturn it and issue the zone, the variance.
Okay. That's good to know.
So the last ones you guys did, you did do the, you listed the findings of fact first and then voted, and that's what I was able to do. So I don't know if, that was, that was the Grove Street one, and that's sort of how I ended up writing it. But if anyone's, I got a couple of copies.
So this is the decision that we filed with the registry, right?
You said this, this already?
I may have missed that one. But.
Yeah, I was looking at different decisions from other communities today, trying to, I want to make sure we're doing this right.
Yeah.
So that's.
Yeah, and, and so, and just remember, like, decisions are going to be, they're going to look a little bit different just how they're set up, but the core substance is usually always the same. There's always a finding of fact, then there's always the, the vote of, you know, closing the hearing, the actual vote on what the application is, and then, you know, there's usually an explanation.
Now, all of that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
When we're in, you know, we're voting unanimously. Say we have a split board, two, three, whatever it might be, when we're doing the finding of facts, would it be Mr. Gibbons, Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Find that it's not derogating from the.
Yes. Yeah, so you would list out, like, you don't have to list out names if you don't, if you don't want to, you can also just list out numbers, like three to two.
Got it.
In the affirmative, you know, that way.
Perfect.
Because there are occasions where that's going to happen.
So how do we address, like you're going through the prong one and reading it, do just a couple of us say, okay, I don't agree with that one, so you have that number or?
Yeah. Yeah, so it would, you know, basically you're kind of.
We just mumble away.
Yeah, well, you're kind of, you're opening it up once you're saying, does this meet? And if everyone says yes, then it's yes. But if there's, you know, some people that don't, then it's, it comes down to how many are in the affirmative.
So you have to ask.
Yes, that's what, do that at our next meeting.
Is that a majority?
So variances are a.
No, I'm talking about.
The finding of facts.
Well, so the finding of facts, because it's a variance, it is a super majority.
Well, no, but.
No, 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 no.
Each prong is a majority. Just on each prong itself.
So that one I will confirm with, with town council because I believe it is a super, it might be a super majority, but for the finding, let me just confirm on that one.
I would think it would be, only because all of the required findings must be found in the affirmative or positively. And in order for a variance to pass, we need a super majority. So we have to have at least four of five on all three of the prongs for it to pass.
Okay. I believe so, but I'm just going to confirm with town council, but I believe that's correct because it is a super majority.
All right. Fair enough. Anything else you want to talk about?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
What?
Are we free to increase the full-time members of this board?
What?
I mean, are we free to increase the full-time members of this board? Bring this specifically up. Marilyn has been a active.
No, we can't increase the board size.
State law.
State law says you can't.
It's five or three, and this board is a five board, five-person.
Right, it's either three or five. That I knew.
I think we can bring, yeah, we can bring out another alternate.
Yes.
We're allowed another alternative.
Right.
You're probably going to get some action in October, November, when I have my baby, so. You'll be filled in for me. I can almost promise, I can almost promise you'll be sitting right here. And you're a huge help. Well, thanks.